I'd like to call the order, meeting of the Town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners for February the 8th, 2016. And I'd like to start the meeting at this dark custom, with the number of style. Thank you. And Jay Ferrell, will you lead us in the collection?
Sir, we do want Ralph to please.
Let the legislation survive under the United States of America. We declare public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First, we're going to address the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval or delay of any particular item on the agenda tonight?
I would like to call item number two, just for a couple of quick questions if I could.
Yes, let's place it under, is that old business?
Yes, old business.
Okay. Can we put it as the item, second item under old business?
Okay.
Otherwise, you see the consent agenda as was before you, which now is the approval of only the January 25th minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes or approve or a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve those.
Well, I just wanted to mention that I've communicated some corrections to Alice, and she's made them. So, okay.
Beth Foley has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Colonel Volgin has seconded. Yes, Mr. Gruzpec.
I think we had contemplated adding an additional, additional resolution.
Yes, that would be the, under the regular meeting agenda. Is that correct? So, we'll make that in just a moment. Those in favor, please indicate, of the approval of the consent agenda with the removal of item number two. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Now, the regular agenda items you have before you. Is there a motion, besides the motion to add the old business item from the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve that agenda? Do we do need to add that other resolution? Yes.
Oh, man, you left motions to approve the other resolution.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We have, one person signed up for public expression tonight, and that is Randy Boller, the former mayor. And Randy will recognize you at this time.
I'm coming to, based on the request of Commissioner Bonnetts, there had been a back-and-forth about the downtown and meetings, and so I'm just here to answer any questions, although perhaps the email back-and-forth answered them.
Yeah, I think so. I thought it might be helpful for the public if, and I'm sorry I didn't bring that email, but do you recall?
The contents, yeah. So, I think that, obviously, Mayor Perry and Commissioner Bonnetts are new to the Board, and of course, we still have an ongoing downtown program. I have not been involved with the program. Actually, Commissioner Foley has a lot more experience and staff, as I put in the email. And I think that the gist of some of the questions were DOT improvements, and a lot of those meetings that are going on, and some folks were confused as to what the source of those meetings were. Again, they have nothing to do with me, but I do think they're following the same protocol that's set forth in the plan that was passed in June of 2014, and following guidance by staff member Paul Horn and Sal from Kimley Horn who designed it, and various liaisons from this Board. I think that's the summation of the email, but perhaps Commissioner Fioco might want to weigh in.
Well, I think I addressed one individual's concerns about what they described as secret meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And I think I, well, I know I expressed my concern with such a description because they were anything but secret meetings. At our last board meeting in this room, I announced to everybody about those meetings and gave a report on the results of those meetings. And so, we have a disagreement on the character of those meetings. They are by no means intended to be secret meetings. There's nothing to be accomplished in secret. And as I mentioned two Mondays ago, there were meetings with adjacent property owners and business owners to show them results of some sketches, to get their comments, because they were uniquely affected by this project. And that, once those corrections were made, they would be presented to those property owners and business owners, and would be presented to the general public for the same review ability, comment ability, and input on the project. So, there's nothing secret about it. It's progress, and I'm working with the PBA and the Main Street Program to accomplish this, and working for the best of the town, so there's nothing secret about it.
They said that that was going to cover the weight, or like a?
A presentation of the concept.
That mean?
Yes, yes, at a public meeting, absolutely. Either, well, there will be presentations of this Board, there might be other presentations outside of this to the general public.
As I remember, the concern, however, it was that downtown business owners in general had been invited to the initial meeting, and that this particular person had not been invited to subsequent meetings. And I think that, that all of the town business owners have a stake in what's going on, whether they're adjacent to the courthouse circle or what. And I think one of the things that I heard in the course of the discussion was that people were finding that meetings with smaller numbers of people in attendance had a tendency to go better. And I think that's a unique and dangerous approach to what the public thinks of. I would just encourage as much communication with the Pittsboro downtown business people as possible on future meetings, regardless of whether they are in the context of a small meeting, or a public hearing, or whatever.
Yeah, we should have some sort of mechanism in place that when these meetings are held, that either minutes are taken or they're recorded, so there's no question that what we're doing, you know, the meetings are focused on, I mean, not necessarily they're there, but that we are open about transparent about what is going on, and that certainly we may use them as our.
So, I'd like to weigh in, Madam Mayor, if I may, and then I can get off the microphone, and we can get on to honoring Diane for her great work. The two meetings that I was familiar with were the initial meeting that was called together back in 2014, when Mr. Terry was still the mayor, that large meeting at the Roadhouse, where Secretary Tatum was there, probably 40 other people were there, including the person that we're referencing. And then, there was probably a series of other meetings that were held with the PBA and other downtown organizations, none of which I actually personally attended, but this is what I understand, and my wife has been to them, and I'm sure others up here have. That large meeting that I know that Paul Horn, and I think Manager Gruzpec was at, maybe six months ago, that was at the Roadhouse, that brought back people, maybe seven months ago, to talk about the downtown plan. That was the last official meeting that I was aware of. I do think you're walking a fine line here, because if you're an elected official, where is the line between going and talking to people on the street versus what are considered meetings? So, I don't really think it's problematic if any commissioner goes and says, the owner of S&amp;T say, "I have a problem with this, and this is what I think about the plan," versus an official meeting. And I do understand how people can be left out, but I don't think we should castigate folks when, I don't think that was the intent there. But I hope that answered your question, Mr. Bonnetts. I tried to write a detailed response from my memory, and there's, you know, no other involvement from my part, other than I'll attend those meetings because I was on the Board when we started that. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, our mayor's updates, and because we have other important things to move to, I will try to make these brief. The, first of all, I'd like to recognize the staff in attendance at our meeting tonight. Town manager Brian Gruzpec, and town attorney Paul Methick, towns clerk Alice Lloyd, our police chief, Percy Crutchfield, our planner Jeff Jones, our engineer Fred Royal. I see Rayford Blan, the chairman of the planning board at the back. Am I missing anybody? Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I reported last time that I had listened to a presentation by the DRT for a program, a new program for pedestrian and bike safety called Watch for Me NC. And Percy Crutchfield has very kindly consented to head up the administration of this program, which is a, we'll be applying for this, application which is, he's reviewed, it has to be in by February 23rd. Spoken also with Paul Horn of Parks and Recreation, and he has indicated that he would be very interested in cooperating as well. Since the last meeting we had, I have met with the town manager on issues of communication. John Bonnetts and I toured the wastewater treatment plant, which was just a very, very interesting tour. I think John wrote on his Facebook page about it. There were people who did think that we could have chosen a better time than right after Friday's lunch to tour the plant, but it was a very, very excellent tour. On the 3rd of February, I attended the reception for Kyle Touchstone, the new head of the EDC. And on the 30th of January, I attended a race relations workshop at the Church of God. The next one, by the way, for people who are interested, is on the 20th of February at Mitchell's Chapel Church, and will feature the showing of the film Selma. Upcoming, I leave tonight to go to Sunset Beach for Essentials of Municipal Government, two days of education by the Institute of Governments and League of Municipalities. So, the public body ought to feel better that I'm at least getting some modicum of education before falling into my full duties. We're looking at a visit to West Jefferson with respect to their Main Street Program. On the 15th of February, a Smart Cities Workshop. On the 17th, the, there's a meeting with DRT on February the 19th, Triangle J Council of Government Mayor's meeting on the 3rd of March. And then, this is just spectacular. On the 28th of April, Habitat for Humanity is having a spelling bee for a fundraiser, and they have, there are teams of four that they're getting together. They have asked the three mayors of the three towns in Chatham County, and I believe they're going to ask the mayor of Chapel Hill to be our fourth. And I think this is just a really excellent way to raise money and embarrass public officials. I got late notice on this one. Tomorrow, February the 9th, there is a meeting that we've not actually been invited to, per se, but it's a community meeting for neighborhoods, businesses, and organizations between Rockerson Creek and 64 Business, and 15501 east of the biofuels plant. Now, there's a real, this group, which has been headed up by folks from Habitat for Humanity, has been meeting, this will be their second meeting, and they've come up with a variety of items that they've identified to improve neighborhood appearance and cohesion, asking for soccer fields and community garden spaces, the kinds of changes in traffic flow and things, and other safety issues, and if anybody could go to that, it would just be wonderful. I think the town has a representative in Paul Horn, but I think somebody from the elected Board might be, if there's anyone that can go to that, and I'll just pass that alone. So, whoever thought that we just met twice in months, that, that's the, that's the wrath for that. Next, I have the absolute pleasure of presenting a resolution of appreciation, and I shall read it now. Whereas the Town of Pittsboro is always appreciative for those who choose to serve for the betterment of the town, and whereas Diane Reed has served as president of the Chatham County Economic Development Corporation for more than eight years, and whereas Diane Reed has served with distinction while representing the town in Chatham County in an effort to make the community a better place, and whereas Diane Reed's professionalism has earned the respect of the public and private sector. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Pittsboro, North Carolina, give great deep gratitude and sincere appreciation to Diane Reed for her leadership and dedicated service to the citizens of Pittsboro as president of the Chatham County Economic Development Corporation. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made a part of the permanent record of the Town of Pittsboro and copied thereof, which has been duly executed by the mayor and town clerk, be presented to Diane Reed. Diane?
Well, what wasn't noted was that I was a very proud resident of Pittsboro for those eight-plus years. And it has really been an honor to be in Chatham County and to work for the betterment of the towns, and particularly the town I'm living in. And it's been great working with all of you. I really appreciate the support. And as you'll learn later, the EDC is in really good hands, and we should move on without any hitches at all. Thank you so much for this, I appreciate it. So, I was telling someone that today I was at the Emerging Issues Forum in Raleigh, and I saw a lot of people who said, "Are you gone yet?" So, I think, just so you know, I really am, I have a one-way ticket that I will be getting on a train three weeks from today. About this time, I should be pulling into Penn Station in New York City to do the rest of my life. So, it's been wonderful, and thank you again.
Thank you. And from the news, perhaps we should have given you a hat and mittens, instead of piece of paper. You all have heard the motion, and you've heard the resolution. Could I have a motion for approval?
That would.
Okay. Beth Foley has made the motion. Michael Fioco has seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you.
So, Mayor, may we go back to Commissioner, please?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we have some other business that we can share.
Yes, excellent.
I can tell you that the RPO is meeting this Thursday. That will be attendance, that will be down in Sanford. The PBA in downtown have their regular monthly meeting this Wednesday, and being attended there as well. And I want to add to these updates, comments on the Main Street, because it's a critical program we're registered in and working within. And I did want to expand a little bit on the meeting that you mentioned with the DOT, because it's not just with the DOT, it's with the Secretary of Transportation. And the mayor and I, thanks to Diana for setting up a meeting with the new secretary, are meeting to discuss the downtown vision plan. The former secretary was in town and was, made some big commitments to Pittsboro, and we want to see if, in fact, the agency will be able to follow through with what the leaders of those agencies have promised to Pittsboro. So, we want to pursue that. Felt it was really important to make this connection, because, you know, we hadn't heard anything from that office, and so, Mayor and I will be meeting with them, and hopefully going back with good news.
Any other updates by other commissioners?
I only have one, and that is I did a town Triangle J Council of Government meeting on last Wednesday. It was very good. It was an orientation for the new members, for the current members, and it was very, very good. And of course, it's always good to meet other commissioners, other mayors, everyone that's involved in the Triangle area. So, I encourage anyone that wants, would like to visit at any time, if it comes to the main road. And I also brought everyone, member handbook, which talks about the Triangle J Council of Government, so that you all will know exactly some of the things that Triangle J does.
Excellent. Anything further on commissioners?
I could mention that the County Climate Change Committee had a meeting scheduled that was postponed due to the weather, and we're planning to meet tomorrow evening, so between the first meeting.
Then let's proceed to the second resolution. This is a resolution recognizing Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is the observance of a special period to recognize the achievements and contribution of Black African-Americans, and whereas it was initiated in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson as Negro History Week, and since 1976, it has been celebrated the entire month of February. And whereas, this observance affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage, and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our town, state, and nation. And whereas, such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. Whereas Black African-Americans have made significant contributions as president of the United States of America in science, medicine, theology, education, the arts, sports, and public service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Pittsboro, that the month of February is designated as Black History Month, and urge all citizens of our community to give full regard to the past and continuing service of Black African-Americans in our town, our state, and our nation. Adopted this the 8th day of February 2016. Do I hear a motion? Moved. Second? All in favor, state indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Under old business, we have the two items. First is the rezoning request for property on like Mount Zion Church Road. And as hard as it was that I tried to get a vote on this last meeting, this is the time for the vote. Thank you, Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Board. Public hearing was held on January 25th for this Board, and there was, the applicant was here to speak. There was no other speakers at that time. We remember the rezoning is going from M2 to RA, to have the property in its entirety to be zoned RA. And I can answer any questions, but I have a consistency statement up on the Board for you for a suggest, a suggested consistency statement, and then I include in your packet a motion, ordinance of approval and an ordinance of denial, and the pleasure of Board to act on either one of those ordinances.
Or discussion? And the consistency statement, yes, that it is not consistent with the land development plan?
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah. I miss, I think, read the rezoning memo last time, and I think we made a statement here that the use of the property is presently non-conforming, such that it was a use not allowed in the zoning district. Reading the memo a little bit closer, I think the sequence of events is important to determine the real stats of the use, because a non-conformity has certain protections by virtue of having been a use in existence when a regulation is laid over top of it. In this case, it's not that scenario. In fact, the zoning district was in place when the use was initiated. So, this is of a different character. And it goes from a non-conforming use to actually illegal use. And so, the OGLs are really in a much more precarious position should anything happen to the house. If it were a non-conforming use, there would be certain rights for them to continue to make, have that use should something happen. As it is now, if something happens to that home, they will have no right to occupy or rebuild. Is that, do I have that?
That's a good, that's a good summation.
Well, I think they were thinking that if something happened to their property, that they could kind of cross the threshold of this 50 percent basis for anything that requires greater than 50 percent of the taxes due to reconstruct would not be allowed. So, anything less. But in this, in this case, if anything happens, they would not be able technically rebuild. So, I point that out only in that I think it's important to know that it's of a different character.
Yeah, there's a handful of these issues, particularly in this part of town, where you have split zoning for homes on industrial zoning grant. And I think it's going to be in our interest as town to reach out to some of those residents and give them some ideas about what is in store for them if their property were to be, or their home were to be damaged, or they want to do something else, add a addition or anything like that to their homes, and it's not zoned properly, they would have to, they couldn't do it. So, probably going to go through a series of letters to property owners in this area and others if we find them. We'll go through a process of trying to identify those lots and those homes that are not zoned correctly, and then we will give the property owner some time to come before the Lord and ask for rezoning or some other options that we, that we may have out there for. As of right now, nothing, they can live in their homes, nobody's going after them to shut them down, or send them, the zoning violations or anything like that. This is a process of us understanding what's out there and trying to rectify it. Very good.
I certainly appreciate you taking us out. I think it's a good service. We can become aware of situations.
I think in this location, I think there's probably about five additional homes that this issue falls under. There may be other parts of town that we have some issues as well, but we'll do a cross-reference between the zoning map and where all of our homes are in town.
So, I'm just getting it straight there. Only M2 zoning, that, you know, all my children laying right there, if any one of those houses were to burn, those would never, no, they could not rebuild that.
They could not rebuild a single-family home in that M2 zoning. It's not allowed use there. That's why we need to reach out to them and get them to do as the OGLs have done, to rezone their property. And what we probably should do is take a look at our future land use plan and start ending that as well, as we have tonight. This one's not in conformance with land use plan. As described in our 25th meeting, I think the land use plan was derived from the zoning plan, the zoning map that we have now, where we have industrially zoned land. And where we have industrially zoned land, it was easy for the writers of the future land use plan to look at that and say, future land use is going to be industrial, not really doing a true inventory of uses out there. It was really referencing the zoning map and then applying that to a future land use plan. What we need to do is do a in-depth study of what the uses, what the land is being used for and then come back to this board and the planning board to talk about changing the future land use. It may be in our interest that we don't want to change the future land use in this area. We'd like to keep it industrial. So then in the event that these homes do, property is sold, that this land is still available to, in the future, to be rezoned back to industrial if we go, go that route. You don't, the future land use doesn't necessarily have to meet the zoning. It's what the town's future plan is there. But for right now, we would like to clean up the current use zoning that's out there so folks can continue to live, continue to rebuild their homes, or to add on to their homes if they so choose. But we'll be coming back to you in the next few months on that.
Could this, could this possibly rezone years and then it just went to M2 like 20 years ago?
Yeah, that's, that's our, our thought is that back in the early, mid 90s, the property was rezoned specifically to an industrial zoning district to, to try to get industry in this area. It didn't fully occur and the property lots were being sold off and allotted into residential uses and that's, and folks aren't aware that their property is zoned M2.
They're not aware.
They're not aware.
Okay.
As the OGLs, as the OGLs weren't aware until October or so. So we'll, we'll reach out to particularly this side of town and then look at some other places in town and reach out to those folks as well.
Other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
Just a comment. I'm mindful of staff's recommendation and I felt pretty good about the explanations we heard last week or two weeks ago. So I'm ready to vote for support of staff's recommendation.
Did you think that motion made?
Let's do the, the consistency statement first, that you find that although it's not consistent, it does meet sort of the language that's been put out there for you in your packet and then on the board. You have to vote on that and then we can vote on the, on either ordinance that is put in your package.
Two steps, resolution on consistency and either the ordinance or approving or the resolution denied.
So I move to accept the consistency statement.
Second? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Let's have it and then we proceed to the actual resolution. Amending the zoning ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance at 480 Mount Zion Road, the OGL property.
You've heard the, you've heard the motion about that fully. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next would be the item that we moved from the consent agenda to amend the town's operating budget. Mr.?
Quick questions for you. I think this is an amendment to the process and it's got a contract value of $55,000. And it talks about this additional work, which includes the monitoring, the smoke testing, the video camera work. And I believe that the $55,000 really is only for the design and contract documents and that the $40,000 that was awarded for this work in November.
For hydrostructures?
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. We had a contract that went up to $40,000. Is my right, is, is it an actual?
Not to exceed.
Okay. Right. And didn't we have a contract for $40,000 for all that work, for monitoring?
Probably not to exceed, but maybe not in actual.
We had base services of $30,000 and a not to exceed of $10,000. And at the time, we talked about the design in this SSES. What was that again?
Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Survey.
Okay. And at the time, we thought it was another, it was additional $30,000 or something like that.
Right.
And so we're at 55 now, so I'm just checking in to see.
Sure.
Where those numbers go because, you know, we're changing the contract amount.
Right.
We're putting about 70 to, you know, close to 100.
So if I can try to clarify it, so the original $30,000 that you mentioned, 15 was for hydrostructures and to do the initial area, this is all under the grant, reimbursable from the grant, the INI grant. And the other 15 was for Deputy K. Dixon Company to do our asset management plan development. So that's the 30. And then we, we did, we did that initial area and we decided, or we determined that we had monies left over from the grant to do further work. So we inquire with the state, can we use more time to do more work? You know, because we're talking about a 0% APR loan here, which is nice, to find more repair rehabilitation to the sewer. So the $55,000 is for, is also reimbursable with the loan. It's, it's to get that further work done so that we're trying to fully fund our $450,000 loan at 0% APR. So they got the one area determined with the engineering and they're doing more work to come up with the balance to basically come up with a larger project that fully, that takes advantage of our $450,000 plus loan. So that $50,000 is that same work added on that is reimbursable by the loan, if that makes sense.
So we'll, we've got about $100,000 in reconnaissance.
Right.
And design.
Engineering.
And will that include inspection, the improvements once contract starts?
It does not include construction administration. It does not. So we would be looking at doing that as an, in addition.
And would that be reimbursable?
Yes.
Be a thing?
Yeah, as long as we're not above the budget. So we're, we're going to look at what hydrostructures has come up with now to determine what we want to do to kind of meet our budget. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to break the budget, but we want to stay right there within it, so.
Go over the 500 or more than 95?
Right.
And so when we're doing that budgeting, we'll be thinking about these costs?
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah. The idea.
So that may limit the number of improved, physical improvements we want.
I'm sorry?
That may limit the number, the amount of physical improvements. So we're keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, because, yeah, engineering is reimbursable. I just kind of lump all this into engineering. That's all reimbursable and that will reduce the actual work we do in the field because of the engineering.
So will we be looking at another budget amendment to include the inspections?
Yes.
In the future?
Yes.
Do you have a ballpark in your?
I don't just yet. What we, I have to meet with hydrostructures to go over their most recent findings in their smoking and video testing work. And we hear, I'm, I'm hearing from them that they're finding significant rehabilitation projects that are clearly in need of rehab. I'm, I'm hearing that. I haven't seen it, I don't know where it is or what it is, but that's what I'm hearing. So once we find out what they have located, then we have to decide priority-wise what we're going to actually apply for, for the funds, which is where they go into the engineering design.
You're going to have these contract documents prepared by March?
Yep.
So the analysis decision-making, prior authorization of, execution of design has to happen.
And the environmental information documentation upgrade, if you will. Yeah. It's all got to happen by March. And they, they've begun the work. I can just tell you that right now. They're under the clock.
If I could, the state has also mentioned their, oh, deadlines. Kind of dropped that.
Right. I feel pretty confident we'll get it all in, in March 1st and we'll have a very good package for the state to review. And I think it'll help the town significantly with our wet weather flow problem at the wastewater treatment plant.
I agree. I think this correction of the INI issue has a, has a huge impact on our sewer capacity and, and which translates to economic development, really. So I think it's a good way to tackle this issue of capacity. So thank you for the clarification. Good luck and some sleep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fiocco, I'd like to thank you for those questions and eliciting that, that exchange and certainly Mayor Perry, when we visited the sewage treatment plant, we heard very loud and clear that this inflow issue is really serious and really holding us back in terms of, well, it wasn't holding us back, that's not the word I think you used, but if we can address these flows, then we can tremendously increase our capacity to handle actual sewage rather than rainwater.
Yes.
So if there are no further questions, we need a motion to approve the ordinance to amend.
Seconded?
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Under New Business, we can now receive an update from the Chatham County Economic Development Corporation and the introduction of the new president, Kyle Touchstone.
Now you know what happens if you stay here. You get appreciated. It is really a pleasure to introduce Kyle Touchstone to the, to this body. I, I got to help out with the search committee's work and we, we had a consultant who did, sort of ran the search and gave us a recommendation of about 13 people for, for the, for our consideration to, for the position. And the clear candidate of choice, after the search committee had, had done an extensive interview process, first by phone and then in person, was to offer the position to Kyle and fortunately he is, was interested and has opted to come. He started February 1st, so he's on day six. And we, we're doing a series of meetings. We were in Silas City last week. We were with the Board of Commissioners last week. We're meeting with, with the manager on Friday and, you know, sort of getting everybody, yes, getting everyone. We need to put the Silas City town manager tomorrow. So I wanted you to meet him and have him say a few words about background, I think, for the luck.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening and what an honor it is to be here in Pittsburgh, in Chatham County and to have been selected to serve in this role. I will tell you with all of these meetings that Diane and I have been doing, I quickly realized she has set the bar high. She's done a phenomenal job and she has definitely laid a nice path ahead for not only this town, but this county. Just this weekend, I had visitors come over from Tennessee and they were amazed at the opportunities here and all that this town and this county have to offer. And as am I. There are great people here, such as yourselves, leading the charge for the town, our county-elected officials, but then also our business owners. Our business community is really the key and to make sure that they continue to grow and prosper while we also look at opportunities for business to come here that either complement or assist our existing business is, is definitely key. So I look forward to working with each of you and getting to know each of you better as we move forward. In the meantime, if I can help you in any way, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're welcome. The next agenda item is a request by Waste Industries for the renewal of the, their contract for solid waste collection, transportation, and disposal agreements. Brian Grusbeck?
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Back in 2011, the town signed an agreement after a bidding process with, bidding process with Waste Industries for solid waste and recycling. I think some of you were on the board at that time. Obviously, our new members were not. The term of the agreement was a five-year period. The agreement itself is set to expire on June 30th, 2016. As I indicated in my memo, staff is, in that time, has worked well and I think communicated well with Waste Industries. Our complaints have been resolved fairly quickly and we haven't had any expected expenses that weren't anticipated by the, the language of the contract or changes in services that weren't dictated by weather. My initial meeting with Mayor Perry, she indicated that sustainability and a solid waste collection was going to be a concern. And in my subsequent meeting with Waste Industries, I cast that law to them. This evening, we have tonight Bill Davidson from Waste Industries to give us a better idea, I think, of our relationship and, and some of the operations that they have at their, I almost said at their disposal. That one's not at all intentional or just not that clever. They, they do have obviously some considerable resources to bring to bear on, on our situation and I think that has definitely filled itself out. Over the course of, at the end of this agreement, Waste Industries is requesting per the allowance of the agreement, a renewal term of up to two years. The agreement allows for a total of five subsequent renewals if you choose to go in that direction. The, any adjustment of fees would be, in this, in this instance, as in previous years, would be based on the consumer price index, which remains low. I think some, those of you that were on the town board during the last bidding and vetting process are aware that the amount of recycling that Waste Industries has been handling has, has increased with this contract. I can tell you from my experience in handling other waste, waste contracts with private services that, that this is a recycling program that's unlike any of the other three that I've dealt with. We have, we have a 95-gallon cart that we use to collect. We have a 95-gallon cart that we use to collect our recycling as opposed to the small little blue laundry bins, I think, that I used in previous lives. Mr. Davidson, I think maybe at this point in time, I'd call and ask you to provide any additional information you have, maybe speak a little bit to your operations, and then also, if possible, answer any questions that the board might have as we consider this renewal term in question.
Okay. My name is Bill Davidson. Excuse me. My name's Bill Davidson. I'm General Manager for Waste Industries in Durham, and we service the town of Pittsburgh. And we definitely appreciate our relationship, and I think it's been really good from our side. Staff has been very helpful for us, and we hope that everybody's enjoyed our services. As Brian spoke to, we're almost complete with our first five years, and there is allowance for five more two-year extensions. From the sustainability standpoint, one of the things that we started offering in 2012 is compressed natural gas in Durham. It was the first site for Waste Industries to run compressed natural gas trucks. We were the first refuse company in the Triangle area to deploy that, deploy the compressed natural gas. And we're up to 31 trucks currently, will be 35 strong by the end of this year. And all of the disposal, all of the waste from the town of Pittsburgh goes back to our transfer station in Durham, and it ends up at the Sampson County landfill, which we have the Black Creek Renewable Energy that turns landfill gas, you know, into electricity. So, we do pick up every other week here from a sustainability standpoint and productivity standpoint. You know, we look at our routing efficiencies, so on and so forth. So, if you have any specific questions about anything, I'd be glad to answer them.
I'd like to start, if I might. I noticed that the service fee is based on not only the number of households you pick up, but also is based on a fuel price of $3.89. Thankfully, fuel doesn't cost $3.89 anymore. Is there an adjustment possible there?
Is there an adjustment for fuel?
Yes.
I wasn't prepared to answer a question like that or that magnitude, but I guess we could look at that. You know, there's significant expense that comes along with compressed natural gas. You know, as far as in our fueling station that we put in in 2012, it was about $1.3 million along with that. So, while fuel is down, but diesel, we're actually paying more for compressed natural gas right now than we are diesel, believe it or not, and we hope that that changes in the future, but by all means, I can look at that.
I had the same observation. I think in the contract, it talks that about the service fee is based on this fuel, and that adjustments may be made. There may be, which means some of it has a choice to make them or not. And they can go in either direction. And I'd like to know, what is our history here? Because fuel price didn't drop yesterday.
Right.
So, under this existing contract, has the town been seeing any adjustments on those base fees based on fuel consumption or price of fuel?
To my knowledge, we've just had CPI-based adjustments.
Okay.
Which is pretty standard. And those have been right in the neighborhood of 2% annually.
So we've had a drop in fuel prices of about $2, yet it's not been reflected in our cost of service. Okay.
I was a little confused about the Sampson County plant. Is that a transfer station for recyclables or for solid waste?
That's for Sampson County is a landfill.
Yes.
It's a MSW landfill. It's not for recyclers. The recyclers for the town of Pittsburgh will go to Sonoco's Durham facility.
Could you tell us a little bit more about that? I'm particularly interested in, I'm a fanatic on recycling, and I'd love to know a little bit more about what's happening to it.
Okay. And I'm more in the transportation than into the recycling, but Sonoco, Sonoco is a regional-based company that we deal with out of Raleigh. Their main plant is at Raleigh. And we deliver your recyclables to their Durham facility. The coming of recyclers are taken to the Raleigh facility, and they're put on a system of conveyors that separate each commodity and out the residue. And so each one of those commodities are sold on the market, so.
And Sonoco, by the way, is S-O-N-O-C-O, not the same oil company that we may remember from the past?
Thank you. That's important. I've always wondered if one should err on the side of caution, and if you think that it's something might be recyclable but don't necessarily see the little triangle on it, should we give it a go and put it in the recycle? Or it's going to get kicked out at the plant if it's not proper? But I'm not sure whether we should err on the side of caution or err on the side of putting too much in.
It's not always easy. As we know with commodities right now, commodities are down. Everybody understands that. And so, you know, it depends on what they can get rid of and what they cannot get rid of. You know, glass, glass is tough to recycle. It's tough to sell. Not all that glass, as soon as it breaks, it gets all in and around the equipment, and they sweep it up and it goes to landfill. So, we say, and we say you can recycle all the basics and then all of the 1 through 7 plastics. And so we keep it broad so that we don't miss any items. I think that in the next few years, that's gonna change. I think there will be some items that will be asked not to recycle. And I think it'll become a little more specific to those commodities that they will accept because we are, we have to abide by their rules and what they accept.
One of the things that John and I learned when we went to the wastewater treatment plant is the absolute disaster that occurs down there when grease is poured into the sewer system in great quantities. Is there any chance that your company would offer any kind of grease collection or composting?
We don't offer grease collection services. That's not something that Waste Industries currently does. We have been looking into composting, but we don't have anything at this point in time to bring forward. I believe you have a great company called Brooks in Chatham County that does supply that service more so than anybody in the area in the Triangle.
But they buy from commercial and industrial uses and grind it up and make compost, so I'm just trying to think of a way to keep it out of your waste stream.
Okay.
Have you thought about or ever conducted a public meeting to inform the citizens of an area that you serve as to better ways that they can help to make the service better, the kinds of objects, like we said, that you recycle or other public information kinds of things?
No, there's nothing that I have done to that. I don't know of a community recycle program that you have currently or a committee that meets on that, but we'll get involved.
Mr. Dukes indicated that they would step up the information and educational materials.
If, and we did speak about that, but from the standpoint of meeting with small groups or commissioned group, we have not done that, but we can.
The modified Exhibit A that you have here, does that new cost include the 2.1% cost of living increase? How was it served?
It does. It does. And the residential pricing is both recycling, collection every other weekend, and trash collection one time.
If I could, these rates, if the renewal term was approved, these rates, if they were to stay at this, would not go into effect until July 1. We would be passing these along as part of the billing.
So we have 90 days within which to solidify the contract that expires June 30. So that sort of tells me we've got till March, March, the end of March.
We agreed to meet no less than 90 days before the contract expires, which we don't. So essentially, as I indicated, as I also indicated in my email, that there needs to be, if you are interested in discussing and seeking more information, then it needs to continue, that discussion needs to continue to move forward efficiently so as to allow staff enough time to solicit bids and hold those meetings because that will take open time.
Have landfill disposal fees gone up during our five-year contract?
Absolutely. In the last two years, they've gone up, gone up approximately 8.6%.
Remember what time period?
Last two years.
I think that's about the end of the questions I have. Are there other questions from the board?
Why don't you hear it and talk about recycling? I had a couple of people ask me a lot, and I don't know the answer. And that is, people ask me, if top is left on a plastic bottle, does that get topped? Or do you think?
You can recycle those.
Even with the top?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other question I get is pizza boxes. I've heard that pizza boxes are recyclable.
No. They ask not to do pizza boxes because of the grease in the bottom of the pizza box. It just, it not only ruins that cardboard, but it also ruins the cardboard next to it.
Okay, so you could do the top. It doesn't have grease on it, but not the bottom?
Technically, you can, yes. So you just, you have to be careful in what you say is good and what's not.
Pizza boxes, I get are pretty greasy on the top as well.
But some of the cardboard's good.
Interestingly, Brooks Contract or the compost company, one of two large composters in Chatham County, does accept greasy pizza boxes, but we don't really have ready means to get those materials to them. I just would like to say that I am very pleased with the service. I have no complaints as town resident. That's been the most, majority of my experience interacting with you, and I appreciate your responses to good questions here today. The service has been great. My five-year-old and two-year-old love washing the trucks, and your crew are always friendly. And I'm embarrassed to admit, maybe, but they're always willing to just take a little extra effort so the customer service transcends your staff. That's great. The size of the recycling bin is great. I just, in reviewing the contract from some experience in solid waste management, I was the sanitation coordinator and recycling coordinator for Mylomotter 20-some years ago. And that's a community of about 13,000 people, so comparable waste stream. With that little experience, the thing that I'm wondering about, and I didn't see in here, is the basis for fees. And I think it's entirely in that fee structure, Exhibit A. Is that correct, or is there a tip fee or a volume basis fee?
For this pricing? It's the price that we charge. There's no tip fee.
Right.
The only thing that is charged, a flat fee, is the, we recycle all the tree and light debris.
Well, you're doing our ordinix too, are you? Yard waste?
We are yard waste, yeah.
No. You don't do our yard waste?
I didn't think so. Okay, well, we have 30-yard open tops at Public Works that they put yard waste in, and we take it to, we take it back to Durham and recycle it.
There's no curb side there?
There's no.
Right, okay. Sorry. The contract does make available, I think, the hauling of what I would call, what I would call, well, I'd call, in my, in the old days, we called it white goods, the refrigerators and washers and dryers and things like that. As it stands right now, the Streets and Utilities Department will pick those up upon request and do a charge. And that's been one of those nickel cheeseburger-type services that I think we've been afraid to give up. They, I think the contract does allow them, does allow Waste Industries to pick that type of material up, and there wouldn't be a direct charge to the resident as a result, so we haven't at this point been involved, I know. But just as an FYI, the contract does make that service available.
So another thing that threw me off a little bit in trying to evaluate the contract as regards the taxpayers' interest and the refuse generators' interests was that it seems that commercial is included in this, and I hadn't experienced that before. I have very little municipal government experience, but I was aware of very many governments that still have municipal undercontracts like this. Excuse me, commercial waste removals.
All the contracts I've dealt with has commercial in them. That's not, there's nothing, I mean, I have received the question, I have fielded the question, that someone that a commercial, say for instance, a restaurant could go out and obtain their own service. We certainly don't go police that.
Right.
If they find a rate that's more competitive than Waste Industries, we have a problem. But the idea being that this would generate a certain housing scale for citizens and business owners.
Yes. Well, and may provide us some leverage for waste reduction opportunities. But it's things like that that lead me, plus what I've heard, just the keen observation that the fuel savings adjustment may be something we need to look into. I would be inclined to suggest that we not take action tonight, but that we give ourselves a little bit of time. I would be comfortable with two weeks before we make a decision on this.
I'd like to touch you, the board.
Well, I agree, and I would like to see what we can do with the fuel costs. Right now, based on the metric, I think fuel cost is about $2. And we're looking at a base fee of almost double that. So I'd like to see what we can do.
Okay.
I have one question for you to add. You guys offer the open-end dumpsters, like for construction sites or open tops?
We do.
Okay. One other question on the commercial rate. You got one month's bill to the town, say, once per week, hey, keep your guard, it's 77.25, and you got $18 is billed to the customer. So is the customer getting two bills, one from the town and one from you guys?
Yes.
Other questions from the board? Is there a motion to delay this to the next meeting?
Of course. I want to make sure. Is Grusbeck at that enough time if we go on a sort of bump for two weeks?
Yeah, I just want to be clear on the information you're looking for because it will be difficult after the conversation goes much, as I indicated in my email, yeah, two weeks it will get challenging, so.
So did you want us to repeat what they specifically want?
I think we're looking for some sort of way to deal with a price adjustment based on the fuel surcharge, which we'll work with Waste Industries and see if we can come up with a number satisfactory to the board.
And perhaps adding a little public service kind of thing.
Outreach education.
Outreach education.
Which, yeah, that's definitely something I think that they're capable of doing and we need.
Thank you.
And further, I personally would be striving to get a better grasp of something closer to some metric that I would have experience with, which would be a volume or a tip, something equivalent to a tip fee.
Do you all have a contract with Chatham County as well?
I don't control a contract with Chatham County, no. But Chatham County does use our facilities in Durham for their own reason.
And there's also the competitor Waste Management maintains that runs the transfer facility over in Silley.
I'm sorry, I don't remember. Do we have a motion?
I move to defer this decision, postpone this decision for two weeks.
John, John Bonnetts made the motion, seconded by Michael Fiocco, that the matter be delayed until the next board meeting. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're now at the point of hearing managers' update. And so, John Gruzak, oh, yes, number three.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I have indeed. Well, I'm sorry.
So I will be brief. This item before you is just a FYI. When you boil it all down, it's about saving potable water and reducing potable water that the town must produce, which costs dollars. The, the goal is to reduce potable water on the user side of the citizens and businesses, and reduce potable water by the town of Pittsboro. And the goal here is to create ordinances, update ordinances, and, and create policies that promotes and causes the reduction of potable water treatment. Because we all know that potable water treatment costs a lot of money: energy, chemicals, staff, and infrastructure. So we're trying to get ahead of this before we grow a whole lot more. And there's a lot of components to this that we won't go into tonight, but I wanted to introduce Jennifer Platt, working for us. She's been with the town of Cary in the past with their water efficiency ordinances. And she's doing an excellent job for us. And the goal is to put language into the UDO on a parallel track through Jeff's scheduling and Roger Walden and Clarion. And we're not going to go into details tonight, but Jennifer can talk a lot very briefly of the basic components of what we're doing. The goal tonight is to get approval for the manager to schedule a public information session, what, March 28th, I believe, so that we can take comments, answer questions, provide draft language, et cetera. So here's Jennifer.
Thank you. You know, they say the definition of an expert is if you live more than 50 miles away. But that didn't stop me from reaching out to Fred when I knew what the town is, is getting into in terms of the growth and the Jordan Lake water allocation application. I'm a proud resident of Chatham County, and I did have the unique opportunity to lead the development and implementation of Cary's program, which is nationally recognized. And we now know that we deferred, we completely were able to reduce the amount of capital infrastructure needed for the town and saved the town millions of dollars in taxpayer resources. So the timing is really good right now, because not only is the Jordan Lake water allocation going on, but the Triangle J Council of Governments, I was glad to hear Commissioner Baldwin talk about what he's in with them. They have a project right now that they're doing to manage a regional drought communications plan. So we'll be able to participate in that as well. So there's multiple aspects to the, the timing that are going to be very positive. And before we get too far down the road, we wanted to get input from you at the March 28th meeting. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have. Or a question?
No questions, only enthusiasm from me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pleased to have a public forum in which we can, I'm big on educating people about water issues. So Fred, are you are representative to the Jordan Lake Partnership?
Yes.
Just, just you? Is there, is there a need for anybody else?
I used to attend the meeting with Stuart Bass. And Nancy Ensley used to come with me a few times, but I generally am the sole, that person.
Hydrostructures usually good, don't they?
Pardon?
Hydrostructures, something good?
No. That was about a year ago. That ended about a year ago.
So would you welcome Jeff Jones or John Bonnetts or myself, or?
All are welcome.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
I have, there's a new meeting scheduled. I'll have to get that to Brian and even put it out there.
Jennifer, thank you very much.
Pardon me. Just one question. So a, a public information session would be just the presentation of the idea that we want to conserve water, be efficient with the use of the water, or would it be draft ordinances?
It'd be draft language.
Draft language, okay.
Everything from landscaping to reuse, recycle, how we manage drought emergencies, what our targets are for water use per day, per capita, in residential and commercial, pretty much the whole gamut of water. So, yeah, it won't, it won't just be a discussion about we need to save water.
So would such an ordinance be just set goals, or would it be in any way prescriptive, like we will recommend or require the use of low-flow fixtures?
Yes, it could do that.
Could do both?
Mm-hmm. Set goals. We set goals in our Jordan Lake allocation application. As an example, we're at around 100 gallons a day per capita, just based on our total water usage. And we're trying to trim that down to 50 or 60 over time. You can't do it immediately, but you work towards it. So there's ways to do that.
Sure.
Our, our non-revenue water loss is a big one. And that's, that's also going to be addressed in this discussion.
Yeah. For example, this past Monday in Chatham Forest, and big props to John Petit and his staff for getting on it so quickly, but there was a main break
Correct.
in my neighborhood. And boy, was that a lot of water.
Lot of water.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we lost, I can't remember how many million gallons in the West Street water main disaster we had six months ago. So this is a big issue for Pittsboro.
Yeah.
Great. One question. Bonnetts Hydrostructure not giving us any advice or attending any of these meetings?
Well, at the Jordan Lake Partnership, when I came on board, I basically took the reins and ran with it. Hydrostructures is a consulting firm, and we use them wherever we need to. But they, they charge us by the hour, and we decided with Brian that, that I could fill the role without Hydrostructures going, and so it doesn't cost us anything. Whenever we need their services, we definitely call them, like the CINI work or water modeling, issues like that. But attending meetings, we decided that wasn't necessary.
Are they getting any of the information from these meetings being passed on to the...
Um, are they getting the data? They're not receiving meeting minutes, if that's what you mean. I mean, these are basically meetings about where we're going with the western wake, the western shore intake. And they're not in the loop right now, to answer your question.
I, I didn't spend long, but I spent a short period of time in Kenya two years ago. And I, I understand water, or I have an empathy about saving water such that, you know, even turn off the water when I'm brushing my teeth, you know? It's just, once you've been in a situation where there's so little potable water, and it's such a precious commodity, it really makes you cry. So I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that you're looking to reduce almost in half. So...
Thanks.
It was a challenge. The Hydrostructures helped us out, Commissioner Farrell, with
the allocation application. That was a very technical input, where we, we got vetted by Cary, Durham, on how we're doing things and how we're going to do things in the future with, you know, we're being looked at as the poster child for growth, you know, with Chatham Park coming on board. And so they were questioning us very seriously on how are we going to handle this on the water side. So they did help us tremendously on that.
I think as always, if there's, if there's a duplication of services, it's not really cost-effective for us to be paying double rate on things that we pay Fred to do already. So there, as, as Fred indicated, there's a significant amount of invoicing that goes on currently with Hydrostructures on things like the CINI project. If, if we have, for instance, we're, we're doing some GPS work over the course of this next year that's going to be locating, relocating services, mapping, and that, and those. So there'll be smart opportunities for Hydrostructures there. But, you know, wherever possible, I think we've got to keep the public's dollar in mind as well. And so we're just trying to be efficient.
So if I might share the comment that conservation of water, water efficiency, it's a good thing. It's something that most folks agree is a good thing, especially to the extent that it can save us money. But this is one of those ordinances that I think, Commissioner Farrell, you might be able to collaborate on this, but I've heard this characterized as the kind of, these kinds of things are brand-new, on the rise, we've never done them before. We've been a small town for an awful long time. We're about to grow into a significant-sized town. And these are the kinds of things that I think we need to elevate perhaps, and encourage our citizens to tune into and become more aware of, that we're, we're needing to grapple with ordinances like this and get them right so that there's no backlash. Would you agree?
Right.
And so I would recommend, if there's no further discussion, I would recommend that we approve staff recommendation for public information session on water efficiency ordinances, and take perhaps extra efforts to publicize the meetings to the extent that that's possible.
Does that motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second that. And I agree that, and one of the thoughts was, could we have two presentations for those folks who can't make our meeting or send a presentation? Could we, could we have another one, you know, just to try and get as much coverage as possible? And I would recommend perhaps a planning board meeting.
Sure.
So folks got two cracks at, you know, having, having a...
We could do the first planning board meeting in April, if Jeff's agenda works after the March 28th meeting here.
I appreciate that. I just think that it's so, so vitally important that with ordinances like this, that we get public support for it, from citizens who've lived their lives, as well as folks who are new to the town.
And businesses.
Thank you. Now, you've heard the motion to authorize the town manager to set the public information session for March the 28th, that it would be to discuss water efficiency in the reclaimed water ordinance, with extra efforts to advise the public in two presentations, one to the planning board and one to the Board of Commissioners. John Bonnetts made the motion. Michael Fiocco, a second. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. John Gruzak, I believe we're ready for your manager's update on projects. And we have that in our packages.
Thank you. We have, I'll try to be, I'll try to be brief. I'll go ahead and stop in. And there's a couple other things. I'll probably go off script a little bit, I just can mention and get a little bit of feedback on. Chatham Park, we, in the past, discussed having quarterly updates to the board from Chatham Park. And I'll be meeting with Preston Development next Wednesday. And that's one of the things, I guess, the main thing from my perspective, at least, one of the main things from my perspective that I want to talk to them about. I want to get a feel for you when you would want to hold those quarterly meetings, and what kind of information you would like to have, and then how we would like to actually receive information and what kind of discussion we'd like to have. So I, I want to get a feel for them, I guess, and when they would be able to do it, but also their comfort level in, you know, in actually answering, you know, questions from you or from, from the board. So if you want to come back and circle back on that, then let me know.
Well, there had been some discussion, I think, of maybe even doing joint meetings with the county commissioners. They're going to, Chatham Park is going to update three bodies, the town, the county, and the school board on a quarterly basis. I don't, I don't know that our school board concerns would be that necessarily overlapping with the town board. But I certainly would think that the county commission and the town board would be of like moon.
Any meeting that everybody, just have them do three presentations or one?
Is there feedback on that? Or is it more the merrier, or the more difficult it becomes? Because then you have less opportunity, perhaps, to ask questions or to, or to get the kinds of comments that you're looking for, feedback for them.
Well, the, the county manager indicated to me that, that the school board, according to what you know, the school board and the Board of Commissioners, the county Board of Commissioners, are interested in meeting with the town board and the commissioners. So I don't know if, if that's something, if you want me to relay feedback, or if you want, how you want, if you want to break that up, if you want to meet all at once, that's, that's, I guess, up to you. And then second, is that what we want to do as our quarterly meeting update, or do you want that separate? Do you want a quarterly meeting separate, directed only toward you from Chatham Park? That makes sense.
That would be my preference. I think that, I, I welcome a, a meeting with the county commissioners, and if they desire to, with the school board, I approve Mayor Perry. I don't know that it's necessary that we meet the school board, but it is. Okay, well, then...
We could be quarterly, they could be quarterly with us specifically, and then at another time, join the three, because we do need to know what you're doing, in reference to schools, what you're thinking about, and what you're also thinking about the Chatham, yeah, Chatham. I think it would be necessary to be out at that time.
I had two school, school board members say that they would like to meet, so I told you, they were like, they specifically said to me, but I think they related, they just want, just have a conversation with us.
Well, I know that Pam and I had one of the joint board meetings inside of the city, probably eight months ago, were pro-saying, I guess, from folks from the school administration, not necessarily the board, when there were some stories about private schools this and private schools that, and no public schools. And we felt we needed to correct them, but the master plan clearly included public schools. And to that end... And to that end, Commissioner Ballbon and I would meet on a regular monthly basis for probably about six months ago, with superintendent of schools, Chairman Crawford, and also Commissioner Howard as well, to talk to them about the fact that the master plan needed to address schools and people behind it all the way in support of this dialogue. So, we felt that, you know, there was a disconnected communication, and we did not want anyone to think that addressing public schools was not a big part of the master plan. So, I think it'd be great for you to meet with the school board as well.
And I think this is for somebody's information session, so they may not think that's going to be bad. You were going to do that. Not so big, like, I mean, you guys had meetings out there, it felt that this would kind of let, allow that picture to happen.
So, I think the answer to your question is both, both meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Sanford sanitary sewer line, the only update on that is that Sanford city manager indicates that he had discussed the basics of the project with their city council during recent, a recent retreat session, and they didn't take formal action, but the city council appears favorable to an agreement. So, I think the next stage is to, is to, on our end, determine what, what type of an agreement would be favorable, both from our perspective and their, their perspective. And I'll be working with Mr. Messick and probably some financial assistance on that as well. You'll recall that I had, I've had some questions about, about the actual application, the large application document itself, that, the document, the application actually to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for the loan to refurbish the wastewater plant and to build an additional forest name to Sanford, that application. Info is online on the town's website. You can link to it on the left-hand side of the front page of the town's website. If you'd like, I have, can deliver that to you in any form you want, but that's at least where it's at, and available to the general public as well. Affordable housing.
If I may interrupt, at what point does that go to local government commission?
The, the state water infrastructure authority met earlier and provided formal approvals, will be notified of, actually, will be actually receiving a letter shortly, and then will be hammering off the agreement. Probably what they're going to want to see is the agreement that we would work with Sanford, but we don't, we don't have an actual date. There was, there was some financial, obviously, if you've had a chance to review the application, there was, there was some financial review and projection that was involved with approving that application, and the point, the point system actually was favorable to us on that. I think that the intergovernmental survey, that, as I said, would be, would be kind of the next step to kind of establish what exactly our, our direct cost to Sanford would be in the arrangement. And I think that's, that's really the next step as far as, as far as we're concerned. The two separate issues, but I think they're, LGC at some point in time is going to want to see that information and have a review of, of that and put their blessing on it at some point.
Thank you.
The affordable housing committee, I met with the county manager and the Siler City Town manager and some staff from Triangle J, and we worked through some ideas, determined feasibility. Triangle J had helped assemble, made some recommendations for task force. We're also going to be putting together some best practices. They indicated that they had some experience in Durham, which I said was great, but we're not exactly Durham. And so, if there's any way that we can see some examples from communities maybe that had, you know, experienced edge growth like we have, or, or will be, and so, we're obviously a more of a small town suburban environment as opposed to an urban environment. And so, the, we'll be looking at some best practices as far as that is concerned, be looking at some recommendations, next steps. I don't think that, according to the county manager, I don't think that this is going to be happening within, say, a six-month timeframe, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to be put together, but we will keep updating you if not. And certainly, if you have any questions, wants to evolve with that, please do let me know.
So, Brian, you think it won't be, what, six months or so before you get this, these recommendations?
We should be getting some recommendations within the next month or so. I think, I get a feeling that they may be at a longer timeframe than initially anticipated. So, as far as the county assembling, the county, the county assembling their needs to do an affordable housing plan on their end, which is kind of how the conversation started, they're at a longer timeframe than maybe I was anticipating initially. Now, that said, obviously, we have our additional elements that need to review affordable housing within the Chatham Park master plan. And so, I'll talk to them a little bit about that and, as well, and getting, might be a nice segue into the next, into the next piece, the next update.
Well, if you don't mind, let me, let me segue into something, because I've been talking with a gentleman named Robert Calhoun, Executive Director of the Orange County Housing Trust. And he's been administering, Executive Director of the Affordable Housing Program in Orange County for the last twenty, twenty-five years. And I've had meetings with him to kind of get a feel for his expertise and hopefully to get some guidance and insight into where he's been successful and where the pitfalls are. And floated an email to the board suggesting that we could have a work session with him. He's more than, he's very excited about the idea of sitting down and talking to him instead of, you know, he'd like to do a presentation, and then he'd be a free-for-all for Q and A. So, I think this format's not necessarily a board meeting, but a work session would be the great format for doing that. Brian, I'm not familiar with the doodle app, but if you'll give me a chance, we'll, we'll float something.
Michael, actually, we met, we should down in about two weeks ago.
You did, right. He mentioned that.
Yeah. Sure, and we went, actually, I was in the planning practice side of the office, we talked about thirty minutes ago.
Well, it's certainly good to know that you've had these meetings, but Triangle J is also interested, so we can certainly, I don't know, any, any information that we can bring you there on this.
Yeah.
The only thing I was going to say is that, is that we have not received the additional elements yet, and when we do, then that's when, as I indicated in previous updates, that's when, that's when Jeffrey will be bringing forward the matrix on how, how we're going to kind of tack each additional element. And that can be, those conversations that you just mentioned and whoever else is involved with it, and certainly go in and feed those, feed that matrix as far as who's responsible and how it all happens.
Yep.
It might be good to add up to this email as well, of involving the local force site from Habitat for Humanity, for the additional material we'll have.
Additional elements we have received, and we do, we'll update wastewater inflow and infiltration, or I.I., Mr. Royal indicated some of our, our work on that. And, you know, really, for all the, you know, all the discussion of, you know, previous contracts and hydrostructure involvement, budget adjustments in process, really, it came down in the last week or the week before, the simple task of blowing smoke through sewer lines. And, you know, I don't know if you guys received any feedback on that. We tried to notify, we tried to notify folks, you know, that we're in the area, and I think I put some, some information out on the social media that if you did see smoke coming out of a manhole, and I guess the possibility technically existed, that smoke could be coming out of someone's foreground. And I didn't, I didn't hear of any of that, but, but anyway, it's just amazing, I mean, how complicated some of the administration of this gets. And really, what it comes down to is, is trying to find a leak by, you know, methods that the Romans used, you know, thousands of years ago. So, I don't know, I mean, I love this job. It's just amazing how basic things get sometimes. Bear with me, I'm getting punchy. Salisbury Street storm drain, speaking of a, a structure that was probably built by the Romans, the storm drain structure that was by, is by Salisbury, is on Salisbury Street by the, I guess, the Episcopalian cemetery and catty corner from the Baptist Street, and across the street from where, where the new Hobbs office is going to be located, has been, has been dug up. I believe they did replace the lid on that structure last week, or no, excuse me, they did replace the curving on that structure last week. The lid will be going on this week. They did have traffic blocked off a little bit on Thursday or Friday, was last week. We're, we're going to keep an eye on that, make sure that, you know, and I think that the barricades went up before we, before we anticipated, and so, we'll try to keep an eye on that, notify people where we can, and as soon as we can. Engineering office space, I think it's finalized how we want the place to look. It's a little bit different from the Chatham Mills location where Hobbs was assumed to be previously located. I think it's a little bit different than what we had indicated before as far as office layout. We're going to add in, add in some hard wall space, I think we had indicated that, and we're going to move the location of the conference room where there's a little bit more elbow space. The, met with, again, met with Mr. Roberts last week, and he is agreeable to all the changes that the board had suggested in previous meeting, at one of our previous meetings. And so, we're anticipating Hobbs moving out of that space at least the weekend of 13th. And as they move out, we'll be going in and inspecting, and then immediately having a third-party firm help us move our stuff out of the current location on San Mill Street into the new location, just the basic stuff that we're going to keep and kind of use to get by until some of the newer furniture arrives. Is that, is current accurate? So, a lot of work to do. We're looking to be in there and operating in late February, so we've got a lot of work to do in short-term time, but I think you're going to be excited. All the challenges of an old space like the, like the Chatham Mills building, I think it's exciting, you know, it's exciting space, and it's one we're looking forward to. Again, it's going to come with a set of challenges, and so, we'll, we'll keep you updated on those. If you have any information or any, any words of wisdom you want to pass along, you know, let us know.
Thanks.
Finance director replacement, the deadline was on, was on this past Friday. I'm reviewing resumes right now, and we'll determine which candidates we'll, we'll have for interview. As of right now, we've kind of spread the, spread the joy of the previous finance director duties around as far as some of the more media stuff. I, I'm hoping we have somebody in place by the time the real hard, heavy budget conversations take place, you know, so in other words, when I submit the budget to you guys, you may, for instance, kind of, kind of when the latest, the very latest I'm shooting for, have somebody in place and hopefully knowing what you're doing with it. The, if, if for some reason that does not happen, then I think we've got staff sufficiently to do a pretty good job of, of making sure that we knew where things were and how they're going to go in. And of course, I think it was the budget before I asked that I spent a sleepless night plugging stuff in, so there's that as well, but boy, it sure is nice to have another set of eyes. So, so at any rate, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that. As you guys are aware, friendly reminder, board retreat is this Thursday from four to eight. We have some handouts.
I did.
I will give these to you before you leave tonight. It's, it's the, it's the agenda such as it is, some bio background on our facilitator, some slides from staff, probably be adding to those slides on Thursday. But I think this will do enough to get you guys marking stuff up maybe even before that. Again, it's from four to eight, and the agenda that we have has staff presentations lasting roughly, unless you guys want to change this, lasting roughly an hour and a half. If it's, if it goes, if you guys get the sense that it goes on longer and, you know, everyone's having fun, then you can certainly draw that out. But I think it's also important too that you guys have an opportunity to bring forward, bring forward your, the things you guys want to work on, whether we do that at this meeting or you set an additional meeting, that's up to you. But, but that, those conversations have to take place in addition to the staff presentations provided from Sanford, or this, you know, valuable to me anyway. Special assessment district workshop, Commissioner Fioko mentioned, and I think you guys all vigorously nodded their heads at the last meeting, wanted to hold a special assessment district workshop. If that's one of those doodle polls that you guys want to engage in, then so be it. How, my, my first question, I guess, is how quickly do you want to turn that around? And, yeah, I guess, how quickly do you want to turn that around? And then we can, we can get busy on providing, from a staff perspective, I'm providing some information from, from our end. I know the county board anticipates bringing this up for discussion, I believe, on the And so, I'll be attending that meeting. If anybody wants to join me, that would be great.
Tell us more about that.
Their next regular meeting, they do their next regular meeting, the Board, County Board of Commissioners is on, it's probably Tuesday. So, I don't know, February 15th, 16th. And so, I believe that's, that's when they're talking about things, but I can, I can confirm if they're not. The, on February 25th, the, the county board is hosting a legislative breakfast, and they've asked me to attend, and they've also asked if anyone else wants to attend, they're trying to get ahead now. And one of the things that they want to talk about is the special assessment district at that legislative breakfast from the town's perspective. If I don't hear otherwise, and for some reason, for whatever reason, that, you know, we haven't had any discussion, my feedback to that board is going to be, to that legislative breakfast and wherever else is sitting around the table is going to be very vanilla based on, you know, it would be just simple, almost a simple regurgitation of the, the resolution and direction you provided to county board at the last meeting, that is, that you give them permission to explore and provide a speed, a name right material, and it's all a target, and so you guys have that direction. So, please, someone let me know if they want to go to that as soon as possible, because I have to get back to the program.
I moved that in there.
That's February 25th, and it's at, I can tell you exactly, I can tell you exactly where you're in this, probably.
The purpose of that, of course, is that the statute has to be amended, and the legislature is coming back, and that they're, I'm sure, going to address our representatives in terms of the tweak to the statute. And obviously, if you all have some opinion about whether it should be done or not done, then that's relevant, that's what it's about.
And I think at this point, we don't have an opinion. Well, I understand.
Yeah, I don't think it's rocket science, I mean, at this point in time, with what I, until we, meaning that, I don't think, I don't think, you know, my charge such as it is moving forward, attending this meeting is not, is not to provide anything that hasn't been discussed and that we don't know, which isn't a hack a lot of this agent meeting. So, anyway, anyone who's interested and has it available on the 25th, I can give you more information.
Mike, can you set that up? Are you not, is that a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, great. As far as for exceptional, special assessment district, I'd like to do it soon.
Yeah.
Want to be better informed sooner than that.
So, is your counter?
Yes, you want to send out?
Next week?
The doodle thing?
Could we do it next week?
So, let's not even ask ourselves about dates next week, someone up here?
Use them for that bit.
Well, I prefer to, if we could constrain the number of opportunities that were being asked in the doodle, so. asked in the doodle, so if there's several of us here who can't do it next week, then we could just look to the following week is what I'm getting at, and then additional dates after that, I suppose, but, did I hear that?
Yeah, I, next week's going to be very difficult.
So, the third week to figure in, maybe a week after that, your poll.
I think that next week is the third week.
Oh, all right, fourth week.
Fourth week, March. I'm curious, what is it that you want to hear from the staff about special assessment district? What kind of information do you want to have to be able to have an opinion? It's only been done twice in the past.
Right, right. So, I'd like to know, how it works, how it has worked.
Well, it's going to work differently in this situation than it has worked in Marsville and Hillsborough, so I'm not sure that there necessarily is going to be a blueprint for how this is going to work. A lot of that is to be determined anyway.
Well, we may want to weigh in on, are there impacts to the county's finances? Yes, are there impacts to our finances? No. Why is it that the town couldn't take this on instead of the county? Those are just some of the questions off the top of my head.
Well, I know there's a lot of statute that provides a framework for establishing a special assessment district, so if we could have a presentation, a better understanding of that, that would be really helpful. Like you said, it's only been done twice, I know once, it was in Hillsborough, so that's a pretty nearby source of information.
Right. You've got to understand that what has been done in the past is a financing technique for the local government unit to construct the infrastructure.
Right.
What they're talking about is not a financing technique for the local government to do anything, except to collect the assessment over a long period of time. So, it's completely different than what has been done before, and it's using the same framework, assuming the legislature changes the law, which may be a big assumption, but we can certainly give you information about how it's been done before, but you've got to understand that that's not likely to be the way it's going to be done in the future if everybody applies into it.
And it's just our understanding of what's being proposed, and as they indicated, they don't even have identified exactly what they're going to be spending or what they would contemplate spending, the special assessment, what services.
That's what I think, for us, how much control we have, or how many spend, what will say what we have in that process.
Well, my only point with that is that we would only be guessing as to what they're spending the money on at this very stage, so, until we have more information.
To the extent that you're talking about public infrastructure that's going to be subject to the town regulation and acceptance upon completion, you'll have input into the design, you'll have input into the location and all that sort of thing, just like you would if there were no assessment process involved at all. So, they're going to be building public infrastructure that they expect you to accept, and the question is whether or not they're going to ask for reimbursement in the future through the assessment process, and that's what it is. I mean, it's not your project, because they're going to do it a different way than it has been done in the past. These are not infrastructure projects that you're going to be in control of, they're going to be privately funded development of infrastructure.
We're going to be, we're going to have the job of maintaining it over a period of time.
Right, and you'll have.
We should have some points about what it's built.
And just like the work that's been done up here now, it's been done according to your standards and specifications, and when it's complete, you'll accept it. The same process with Hobbs.
When they're building, when they're ruling these things, it's not considered town property, so it's county property at that point.
No, it isn't.
So, we have an annexed at that point.
It's not.
ETJ, but we have an annexed, yes.
As part of the development plan, such as subdivision, site plan, accompany by a request for annexation.
Right, before they get a site plan approval, presumably before they start building anything.
I understand that, I'm just saying, I don't know, it just feels like we need to make sure that we're not going to get ourselves into something that we don't have authority on, just, we don't know yet, it hasn't been done before.
They're going to be your pipelines and your sewer lines, and it will be done according to your standards and specifications, whether they do this or they do it some other way. You'll have as much control.
But they're going to get to determine what projects that they consider are most important, it may not be what the town thinks is most important.
Then you want to prove the site plan, or you want to prove the subdivision.
It just hasn't been done before, I think it's valid that we want to look at things and make sure that this is protected, I think it's something we just need to look at.
I agree.
All right, have we authorized, Brian Grisbeck, to set the special assessments work session at a time which seems to be mutually convenient? Is that what we need to do? Further questions?
I do think that February is generally when.
It is her, fourth or fifth.
Fourth, three.
And then, if I may go back with a question on the additional elements, Brian, have you been given any heads up or guidance as to when to expect an ETA for the additional elements?
No.
None?
When we know something, it's there, we don't, tell them in a couple weeks, a couple weeks, and all we know.
That started back in December.
Yeah.
Oh, they have been saying repeatedly, in a couple weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, that's important to know.
They're going through their own internal review with their attorneys and their planners and their third parties and stuff like that, so we'll know what we know. Hopefully, I have, we have meetings this week with them, tomorrow I have meetings, Prime has meetings on Wednesday, hopefully at the next meeting we'll be, if we can live in more, or we might not.
Good.
We might hear this week, in a couple weeks.
I don't want to rush that.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I want them to have as much time as they need to get as good as they think they possibly can.
That's right.
And they're aware we're not planning on, we're not planning on, until we rush this either.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, I think we move now to commissioners' concerns, and shall we start with Commissioner Farrell?
Well, just, Brian, a follow-up on the sidewalk up there in front of Tommy Edwards, if you will, I noticed that little hole in the sidewalk still there, it's right there to the, right at the crosswalk. I guess you could say it's more or less to the corner of Tommy Edwards Building, I think.
That was the brick?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, sorry, good job on that, I think we're trying to find someone to repair the brick.
And about the I and I, I know we have had some homes that have had some smoke infiltrated, because I've had some calls, and the fire department has had news, so, yeah, so it's quite a few homes that, I don't know if they come through dry traps or water drains and soil drains or whatever, but they have had, we've had several homes here in town that have filled up with smoke.
And they're probably in the same area or within?
Both, yeah, whatever area of street there's smoking, there's been several homes that have filled up, so, and I think our structure's been looking into that pretty proactively, but, yeah, I know, I know the fire department has caught a lot of grief from this, and that's another thing, some of the door stickers that've been put on, some homes have been put on the front of homes, you know, to use a little common sense, a lot of people park in the back, the garage is in the back of the house, and they don't even use the front door, so, a couple of these houses, it was actually on Farrell Street, it had a, my house and the house next to that and the daycare, all three of them got smoked up, and the, like I said, the stickers was on the front of the house, the driveway goes right straight to the back, so the notice was never received, and I just passed that out. That's it. Oh, I got one more thing, sorry, and it, and it still weighs heavy on my mind regarding the Sanford wastewater, I know that, you know, every time it comes up, I still feel very strongly that Chatham Park should man up and help us out financially with that, that's just the way, I think Pam and I spoke to that when we was talking to Tim, and of course, his answer was, well, we're going to gain it back in fees, but, you know, we're putting up $21 million from the start, before we even get the first fee, so, I really don't feel that Pam is being treated fairly in that. Maybe they can step up to the plate.
I'd agree with that, and I think, I don't want to get ahead, but I think that's why I put some emphasis on the last meeting, at the last meeting, on financial modeling, to get a better understanding of where that's going to take us, where these fees are going to take us, how far it's going to get us, so I'm going to dig into the application to the water revolving loan fund, to see if I can discover more on that. Thank you.
I just have one thing, I went to beggars and choosers finals weekend, so, just a very sad day, because it's been substitution in the town, and it occurred to me that maybe we should do a resolution of appreciation for payments to Mr. Smith, because I really feel like beggars and choosers, was one of the first businesses in Pittsburgh, actually brought people from out of town to shop in Pittsburgh, and I think it really helped up the turnout downtown Pittsburgh, and the fact that they've been there so long, they supported theater productions with their costumes, they put their art on the side of the wall, and the words of advice on the front of the building, there's just so many things that I think that they contributed to the town, and I just wanted to see what you all thought about doing a resolution on the behalf, a resolution of appreciation for payments to Mr. Smith and beggars and choosers.
I really like that answer.
I feel a lot of nodding down. I'll do that at the next, at the next meeting, then. Staff will write it and present it, and then we'll notify them to come to the meeting and have it presented.
And I think if all of us have things, we might, should include in the resolution that I have, it's a little bit.
I just have a question, just to follow up on the clarion group request.
Yes, so, I'm really appreciative, Brian, that we had this conversation about solid waste, being very keen on trying to reduce our environmental impacts, I'd love to see when and if their compressed natural gas fleet could extend to us. We may not be in an attainment zone, but we've got a lot of people breathing the air here, and recycling, I'd love to learn more about the recycling, and food waste is something that probably we cannot take on at this time, but because there's no municipality in the state that does it, there's some that are experimenting with it, but food waste and what they call wet waste, organics, waste reduction, is something that in general we'll sometime be able to explore. We have, as I mentioned, two composters in the county, and Brooks charges $85 a ton, or might be able to do less than that, and so that's one of the reasons why I want to try and ascertain an equivalent of a per ton fee in that contract, just to see if we can benchmark whether or not it's worth our time and effort in future to look at that segment of our waste stream, trying to divert it. I've heard a rumor that school board is looking at the old Biolex building, and wondered if anyone else had heard such. Rumor is that the school board is looking to relocate, consolidate into a larger building.
There are many.
Yes. Okay, nothing there. Note of thanks for Jeff Jones, for conversation we had earlier, the general observation that during the politics of the campaign season, it seemed pretty clear that the planning board was doing some really good work diving in, but there'd been some occasions where information transfer had been incomplete, and commissioners had really been able to understand just what the planning board had grappled with, and so I appreciate, Jeff, your interest in speaking to the planning board to have them begin to present their thoughts, not just in the cut and dried fashion that you as staff have to present it by law, but in the meaty, here's what we grappled with, and here's why, and that kind of thing. So, thank you for asking the planning board to do that. In terms of planning board work, I've been reading the draft UDO, and there's some language in there to change the makeup of the planning board, and I think that we need to reconsider that language, and I'm probably not the first to say that. I would prefer we go a different direction, and I'll just share this to the board, I think that it would benefit us all in this immediate community, in the town and in the ETJ, if instead of shrinking the number of ETJ members, we added one or two town members to our planning board. I think having a slightly larger planning board would be beneficial, more eyes on a lot of this hard work that they're contemplating. So, at very least, keeping the same number of ETJ members is important to me, and I do think that if we feel there's a need for greater strength of representation from in town, that we contemplate adding to the planning board. Going down my list some more, big praise for John Petit on the water main break in Chatham Forest, that was very concerning to my neighbors, and his crew got it locked down and got it cleaned up very quickly, and I appreciate that. And Chief Percy, again, thank you to your staff for patrolling Hillsborough Street north of, or just south of the change from 45 to 35. There is a lot of instances of folks exceeding the speed limit there, and so as soon as we can get that radar speed monitor back over there, that'd be a great thing, and I just happened to see someone, I think someone I know, who got pulled over, I think it was this morning or yesterday morning, unfortunate for them, but it is an important area, because there's folks who live there who really, when I was knocking on doors, it was a concern to neighbors along that street. And lastly, I guess circling back to the UDO a little bit, and as I mentioned earlier to Commissioner Farrell, I think there are some things in the UDO that are brand new under the sun for town of Pittsburgh, and things like conservation ordinance, and I think that it's really important that we, as citizens, do outreach to let people know what we're contemplating, and get as many people to weigh in and read it and comment and improve it as possible. I would really not like to see the ordinances, us get ahead of the town. We may agree that in future development, it's really important to have conservation rules or treat cover protection rules, but our con- rules or treat cover protection rules, but our constituents may disagree. And I think that some education would be really great. So, I hope to work with staff and others, anyone else, to do some additional education outreach meetings. I have in mind to reach out to civic organizations, the Pittsboro Business Owners Association, churches perhaps, to set some dates in public facilities to just not go into the ordinances, but to kind of give an overview, let people know that it's coming, let people know about the website, just to stimulate discussion. I think it's really, really important that we make sure everybody's on board as we move forward. So, thank you for letting me have the voting. That's it for me.
All right, are there any further matters or do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second? Seconded.
Good. All with favor?
I got it.
Thank you.